And wish the city of Los Angeles Happy St. Patrick's Day. We're here today with the Lyons Academy of Irish Dance from San Pedro. Once again, these talented dance athletes are here with us today. And I want, again, I want to wish you all the blessings of St. Patrick's Day. Or as we say in Irish, Benecta, nefala, poric ort. Green beer, or having, you know, puns about leprechauns. And all of that is fun, of course. Next week, the council general, McKenna Smith, is going to be visiting us. She is traveling with the Prime Minister of Ireland now and concluding her travels at the White House on Sunday, where President Joe Biden is going to be hosting a reception for the Prime Minister or the TISA of Ireland. And fortunately, I've been invited to represent Los Angeles at that reception. So we will come back on Tuesday, and the council general and one of the ministers of Ireland will be with us again. So I'll ask you, make sure you hang on to your flags. You can take them down, but put them back up on Tuesday, okay?
Mr. McCosker.
Thank you so much. I do want to follow on that. That's an excellent point. I mean, I will, as a homework assignment, we should all look up the San Patricios. The San Patricios, the band of Irish fighters who joined the Mexican side in the Mexican-American War because they felt more, a deeper kinship with the Mexicans, Mexicans who were fighting for their own survival. So that's a homework assignment, and it's a great story. So thank you very much, council member, for pointing out that deep kinship. I want to, I want to present to the Lyons Academy of Irish Dance, to their instructor, who herself is a champion dancer, and to these wonderful athletes, a certificate of recognition on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the 1-5. Thank you for sharing your extraordinary talents with this community on St. Patrick's Day. I know this is a busy time for you, so make sure you stretch and hydrate and be well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Today, we are saying goodbye and celebrating the career of a man who has worked tirelessly for over 20 years behind the scenes to ensure this city's police commission is run well, open, and transparently.
Hold on, Ms. Rodriguez. General Dogon, this is your first warning. Please stop disrupting the meeting. If you're not going to stop disrupting the meeting, we're going to ask you to excuse yourself. This is your last warning. Ms. Rodriguez.
That's it.
All right, that's it? Ms., General Dogon, please exit the building. Sergeants will ask you to see General Dogon out of the room.
General Dogon, you've been warned twice now, and now you've been excused from the meeting. So please exit the meeting quietly. Thank you.
Please leave the room quietly. All right, he's exited the room. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you. City's police commission is run in an open and transparent way. Mr. President, if we could just inform the sergeants to identify those that are disrupting the meeting?
Yes, there are people, multiple people were shouting out in the back of the room. We'll ask the sergeants to identify them. We'll warn you once, and the second time, you'll be excused, just like the prior person.
Thank you. Mr. Tefank was born outside of Manhattan, New York, in Weehawken, New Jersey. Thank you so much, Mr. Tefank colleagues. Mr. Tefank, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, thank you so much for your dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles, our Los Angeles Police Department, and thank you for, and Anna Maryland, you've earned this just as much as he did, wishing you the very best in your retirement.
Thank you, ma'am.
One more time for our special guest today. So grateful to you on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council.
And just last year, the world witnessed horrific acts of sexual violence against Jewish and Israeli women. I'm proud today to be joined by a number of fearless men and women and, who are advocates at the forefront of ending violence against women around the world. Among others, I am joined here today by Gina Raphael, the Chair of Wiso, California; Nate Looney, the Director of Community Safety and Belonging for the Jewish Federations of North America; Carmel Halevi, Consul for Public Diplomacy with the Israeli consulate; and Talia, a survivor of the Nova Music Festival massacre that occurred on October 7th last year. Like the Miraball sisters, we must uplift and call attention to these atrocities so that we can end violence against women around the world once and for all.
At home in Los Angeles, we remain committed to fighting the scourge of hatred and antisemitism. We thank you, Councilmember Park. We thank you, Councilmember Yaroslavsky, and we thank Council President Krakorian for having us here today. We thank you as well for the Jewish community, which our children represent 18% of the population in Los Angeles. We thank each and every one of you for standing with the Jewish community, the people of Israel, and what is right. Thank you again. Am Yisrael Chai, the people of Israel live, and Shabbat Shalom.
Gina, thank you so much for your remarks and your leadership.
Sorry, whoever's yelling out, whoever's yelling out, you are instructed to cease the yelling so that we can continue with the presentation. I do see Stacey Segura-Bollinger, this is your first formal warning. Everyone else, do not disrupt this meeting, or you will be removed.
Gina, thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Your words have a lot of impact, and it is an honor for me to stand here as an ally with you in the fight against violence.
Thank you so much.
In all its forms against women around the world. I am going to hand the microphone to Nate Looney from the Jewish Federations of North America to offer some remarks.
My hope is that this resolution will be a launching point for our Los Angeles community to come together. Thank you.
Mr. Looney, thank you so much. The context in which we are here today is a painful reminder of the trauma that women have experienced as a result of violence and sexual violence, and a reminder to all of us of the work that yet remains to be done. And again, it is my honor to stand in solidarity with you and to present on behalf of the City of Los Angeles this resolution commemorating International Elimination of Violence Against Women's Day. Gina, this is for you. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, Councilmember Park. We have a few members on the queue that would like to speak. While you all are taking photographs, we'll begin with Councilmember Lee. Folks, please, Mr. Lee, folks, please stop disrupting the meeting. We're keeping track of who's having outbursts. We will remove you from this meeting if it continues. That's your second warning, Ms. Bollinger, you're out.
Ms. Bollinger, you have been warned multiple times, and now you've been instructed to remove this, to exit this meeting pursuant to Rule 12.
Ms. Bollinger is standing on the chair and will not stop yelling. She's been removed from the meeting and continues to disrupt the meeting. We'll ask the sergeants to remove Ms. Bollinger from the meeting. Ms. Bollinger continues to disrupt the meeting, shouting, standing on the chairs. We'll continue to ask her to leave quietly. All right? Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Councilmember Park, for having these incredible women in here today. I've had the opportunity.
Gentlemen who just stood up in the black hoodie, you are instructed not to disrupt this meeting. This is your first and only warning.
Mr. Lee.
I've had the opportunity to work with many of these women in the past and support different causes that they've been a part of. Thank you for highlighting their stories and, you know, this council, I'm hopeful that we are, will always stand together to stand against any type of violence against women around the world, especially here in the City of Los Angeles. You know, we say it over and over, our diversity is our strength here in the City of Los Angeles, and I just appreciate you being here and you bringing these women in today to, to, to show the impact of their stories and to make sure that everyone hears what they had to say. Thank you, Ms. Park.
You, Council President, thank you so much, Councilmember Park, for uplifting this day. I want to share that I'm a survivor of sexual assault, and so uplifting days like these are really important, and that's why I've dedicated my career to trying to prevent harm and violence instead of just responding to it. And so it's important that we recognize this day. But I also call on my colleagues, my male colleagues who are in this space, the men who are in this room. I want to thank the ones that stand with us when the patriarchy comes after us. And I call on those that haven't stood with us to stand up against the patriarchy when they come after us, because they do every single day. Being a woman politician, man, I can't tell you, the hate that I get just for being a woman and for what I look like is just every day. So thank you for uplifting this and highlighting this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Yaroslavsky.
All items and general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
All right, so let's start off with item, where is it? Okay, let's start off with item 57. Item 57 is related to lighting up City Hall for the International, International Women's Day on March 8th, which was a week ago. So, so, you know, I wonder what the amount the city's going to pay in debt for paying it late. What's the interest on that? Because, you know, poor people, you charge them interest, you charge them penalty fees, late fees if they pay things late. Or in some cases, you just have the cops come and arrest them and, you know, for paying something late. But here you are paying this a week late. So, um, so there's got to be some kind of interest or penalty for you paying it late. Let's see, we have item 59. That's a motion from Krakorian for his Earth Day LA celebration. Krakorian, who's taking a vacation because he doesn't want people yelling at him for his ethics violations. Krakorian's holding it at the North Hollywood Conveyance Yard, the sewage maintenance facility, which sums up his council presidency pretty well. You know, I wonder if during this event, if Paul is going to endorse someone for City Council using his official position as, as a council member and council president during this official city event. I wonder if that's going to happen or not. Let's see, we have item 65. That's for Denim Day, lighting up City Hall for Denim Day, related to the, to the sexual assault, talked a little bit about earlier. Or no, actually, you didn't. You just spent an hour being pro-genocide and lying about what's going on in Gaza. And you, and you should all call for a ceasefire. But yeah, I'm talking about 65.
This is not on the agenda, so please connect it to the agenda.
Related about sexual assault. And so, and, you know, you talk about violence, what about when the, you know, physical and sexual violence against women? What about when the cops have physically assaulted women in City Hall? Many of them are in this chamber right now, or at least in this building. We have 68. That's related to the primetime Emmy Awards. Hopefully, no one, no unhoused people are going to be subject to a sweep because of that. You might get more information, we might be able to get more information on that kind of thing if you'd release the report back on 4118.
Great. My name is Adam Smith. I'm from the Los Angeles Community Action Network's Human and Civil Rights Committee. I think there's a lot that comes out of this room and still doesn't come out of this room. But, you know, I appreciate celebrations of, of Women's Day and mental health awareness. But I think that sometimes these things ring a little hollow when we see a lot of the violence against, particularly against unhoused people and women around the city. Yesterday, while I was observing an encampment sweep on Gladys in Skid Row, a woman's tent was knifed by sanitation. A nice tent was knifed by sanitation, and then Narcan and menstrual pads were taken out of that tent, and all of that stuff was trashed. And so I guess I'm just like, not trying to hijack these, these agenda items, but when we talk about Women's Day, and we talk about women's rights, and we talk about mental health awareness, and we're still waiting for the city's accountability on this 4118 report back, which I've, I may have been here before speaking about, and that might not be on topic for I Am Groot, but it is on topic when you're out observing the violence of these sweeps, the violence of the LAPD reset team using 4118 to target women, to pull them out and run them for probation and parole checks and arrest them on old warrants for shit that they can't afford to pay. Like, this stuff keeps happening, and this is why we're continuing to ask for this report back and asking council members to actually lift up our demand for this report back. Like, there's so much silence in this room around this ongoing 4118 enforcement while we're waiting like a year for this report back. Thank you.
Shamika, and I'm speaking to items 57 and 58.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items. Please begin.
So, um, so these celebrations, they're great, you know, I'm a woman, Women's Day and all of that. But it's funny how we're celebrating that while we're still being hurt by this 4118. We are just asking for the report. I'm an unhoused woman, and we're constantly harassed, we're constantly being swept under the rug. All we're asking for is a report. Can we get the, the report back on 4118? We're suffering with mental health, with being harassed, with our rights being diminished, all of that. So I'm just here to say that we are looking for the report back on 4118. It's 277 days overdue. That's ridiculous. We're asking for the report back. Thank you.
I'm a constituent of CD5, and on the topic of Mental Health Month, I want to address 4118. This continues to displace folks whose belongings are stolen by the city, including medication for anxiety and depression. The increased arrests and presence in violence inflicted by LAPD is traumatic and damaging to unhoused folks' mental health. I've seen in the face of 4118 in my neighborhood again and again that it's made it harder for my neighbors to get closer to accessing permanent supportive housing. As we've seen from the recently leaked report, 4118 is not effectively offering housing, which is critical to people's well-being. Please abolish 4118, look at this report, look at how it's ineffective, release the report, and invest in direct resources for housing, mental health services, and substance abuse treatment. On 57, these justifications for genocide continue to become more ludicrous. I'm disgusted. A presentation for International Women's Day that Zionism is being weaponized against me as a Jewish woman. The IDF, who also happens to train the LAPD, perpetuates violence against women and children and women and mothers in Palestine. Where is the mention of Palestinian women and children who are dying of starvation? Is everyone going to stay silent as $14 billion in the works to be sent to continue this occupation and violence while six people a day die in the streets of Los Angeles? Stop wasting resources on 4118. Direct them to folks living on the street who are not getting services and are also victims and survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. Do not use my faith, my gender against me in, in the name of genocide. Free Palestine.
Mental Health Month coming up, as a CD5 constituent, I'm extremely concerned about how 4118 will be used to displace my neighbors who are houseless. While we are still 277 days overdue on CD5's report back on 4118, instead of investing in permanent housing and supportive resources, we are causing policies that are detrimental to people's mental health. I'm sick and tired of council prioritizing policies that are disappearing houselessness. That center disappearing houselessness while I watch friends be chased block by block and lose their belongings in sweeps like IDs and medication, including medication for anxiety and depression. I urge council to abolish 4118 and to invest in permanent housing and supportive resources. On item 57, I'm a Jewish woman who denounces the occupation, Zionism, and Israel's apartheid state. Are we really going to discuss Women's History Month and not speak about Palestinian women and children? Palestinian people and children are dying of starvation right now. Two out of every six children in Gaza are malnourished. 31,000 people are dead at the hands of the Israeli government. Our tax dollars are funding this. Not in my name is a Jewish woman will my faith be used to justify genocide. Never again means now. As a Jewish woman, I say permanent ceasefire now. Is anyone going to say anything about the fact that Congress?
What topic is this on?
International Women's Day, I'm a Jewish woman, and I'm speaking on the fact that I don't want Zionism being equated with International Women's History Month. Is anyone going to say anything about the fact that Congress is about to send $14.1 billion to the Israeli military, $0 in humanitarian aid, while six people are dying each day on the streets of Los Angeles? I want to see a permanent and immediate ceasefire now.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items.
Yes, Irish pumpkin head. So, let's see here. Look at the nice stealing on 69. You've got, let's see, Heather Jabba the Hut, Paul Martin Krakorian, the goat herder, and Kevin DeLeon. Oh, Kevin, now you're stealing on number 69, you're breaking my heart. We don't know where these projects are. We don't know anything. Am I going to have to listen to UNISAS and vote for Isabel? Now, don't make me do that. I want to know what's on this agenda. Where are these projects? Stop proving UNISAS correct. I want her to be wrong. Now, I want to come back to your side, but you're forcing me into a bad hand here, my friend. I think Kevin's fucking up. He fucking up bad. Now, we get to, let's see here, the, the Academy of Assholes. Let's see, what do we got here? The Asshole Technical Association of Scumbags, the ATAS, is holding their 75th primetime Emmy Awards. Well, first of all, nobody watches TV anymore. Number one, it's boring, and number two, you can just go on YouTube and get it all for free with no commercials. $110,000 payment to CD9. Why are we paying an indicted felon, CD9, $110,000? Shame on you, Marquisi, you know better than that. He's going to be going to prison before the end of the year. I move that this money be split between CD1 and CD8 where it's really needed. I second that. Well done, thank you. Now, we get to some other shit. Let's see here. CD12? Number 64? Fuck number 64. 65? Fuck number 65. I don't want to illuminate City Hall. I want to turn the lights off and put you out of business, that's what I want. And then we get to CD7? You're doing a good job, Moany Cow. I'm going to give you a shout out on number, what is it? 66. 66 is an excellent job. I want more council members to do it. Here's a shout out to CD7. Moo! A shout out to Moany Cow, good job. Keep eating. And then we have number 67? A dedicated requirement for Marquisi? That's right. Now, he's not going to pay attention. That's right. What do we call that? Plausible deniability. That's right. So that he could tell the FBI later he wasn't paying attention when he voted yes. I'll be back on general comment to tell the Irish to go fuck themselves. Stay tuned.
Good morning. My name is Eric Sheahan. I'm with No Olympics L.A. I'd like to speak on 57 and 58.
Okay, so you have two minutes.
So 57, the way y'all are using Women's Day to support genocide is pretty wild, but not a huge surprise. White women have a long history of involvement in criminalizing black and brown folks, so good on you for continuing that. On 58, I'd like to speak both in support and opposition of this celebration of Mental Health Month. We critically need to support folks dealing with mental health crises, but lighting up City Hall is simply not enough. You know what can cause a mental health crisis? Living in a city where your very existence is criminalized. Living in a street where your medication and legal documents can be taken and thrown away by police because you put your tent in a 4118 zone. Living in a place where you don't have access to clean bathrooms. How many bathrooms does Skid Row have? Having a safe place to shit is important to my mental health, I think it's important to yours too. Unhoused people are less likely to instigate violent attacks than housed people. Most police use of forces used against homeless folks. If we're going to light up City Hall to pat ourselves on the back, we should probably stop contributing to people's mental health crises by criminalizing their very existence. Release the report so we can address this failure and support the mental health evangelinos. Where is the report?
57, you have a lot of ladies here celebrating National Ladies' Day, but not one of you here is paying attention. Not one of you, not even the ladies. They're all on their phones texting. They're coming out here and pleading to you. Listen to them. There's a reason this day exists. I'm sorry, but you guys are falling short. You do not represent the people that elected you, but you did when you were running for office, right? Put your phones down, listen to these ladies. It's not easy for them to come out here and say something.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda. I need you to tie it to the agenda items, please.
I got 15 seconds left on that item. Sorry, Mr. City Attorney, that led Mr. the, uh, Jesus. Paul Krakorian voted on, as a landlord, last week, and I pointed it out to you. Do you represent the city or Paul Krakorian?
Speaker, which item are you speaking to? I can't tell.
I, I'm, I want you guys to pay attention to the people that come out and cry to you.
This is your only warning, that you are not on the agenda. You need to stick to the agenda items.
57, let's go to 58. Mental health, maybe you'll understand this one. It's not easy for people to come out here and pour out their hearts, to counsel people that only are there for you when you want to get elected. If not, you're on a phone or in the back rooms. Please pay attention to the people that are coming out here. It's still on item 58.
Speaker, this is your final warning. This is not on the agenda items. So this is your final warning. Then please connect it to the items.
Again, it's not easy for them to come out here and speak to you if you're not paying attention, Mr. City Attorney. Maybe you false suit. Number 66, the copper wire being stolen. 2017, I caught somebody stealing that on my off day. LAPD arrested them. I got a commendation, but that's what we're supposed to do, get involved. We're supposed to represent while we're on the clock or off the clock. And since you're on the clock, please pay attention to this chamber.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under.
Callego, I would like to speak on item 68, 69, and 58, mental health.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
58 is that y'all got all this money for everybody else though. 4118 is criminalizing homeless though. Y'all need to be housing homeless instead of getting, sending all this money to Israel and Ukraine because that, um, and also, I'm going to speak on 68 about this Peacock Theater that's in downtown near the convention center. Marquis Karen Dawson wasted $110,000 off of taxpayer dollars. He could be taking that shit and housing the homeless in his district. His district has one of the most highest homeless, uh, black on plane rate in the city. Show you number corruption, want to do the damn theater instead of housing the people in his community, his district.
So, Speaker, item 68 is about the Emmys Awards, so please connect this.
That's what I'm doing, reference to that. Our taxpayers is going towards that shit. I don't want my taxpayers going to, taxpayer dollars going to that shit. Then I'm going to speak on 69 about the housing. Karen's Bad Safe Initiative program, where the hell is that shit going to? She only housed less than 200 people. Where's all that other rest of money going to? That shit ain't going towards community, going towards housing the homeless people. That shit is stuffed in your pockets and shit. Then I'm going to speak on that, about the Jewish shit, then about the women's rights shit, is that y'all sending money all these other countries and shit, Israel, Ukraine, and the Holocaust, they even have. Holocaust didn't even happen in America. The Holocaust happened in Germany. That means Germany should take that responsibility on that burden. And y'all, and the black community don't support genocide was going on in Palestine, too. Y'all had that puppet and that clown up there trying to see the black community support that shit, but the black community don't support genocide was going on. So, yeah, free Palestine, stop genification. Israel, Israeli government's race towards the black community, too. They don't like black people and shit. The Israeli government said that the biggest threat to black, to Israelis is the black community in America, so we just let y'all know that the black community do not support Israel. We do not support genocide against Palestine. That's all I gotta say.
Next speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, sir. Because my language disability, I would like to speak on all items, please.
So you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Uh, yo, yo, sabgai, si sabgapi, ba chong sabgai, ya gong, mi gya sabgai, ya chong sabgai-- Forgot, this is 57. Mi gya sabgai, ya chong sabgai, ya 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 sabgai, you know, whatever. Because there's no crime, there's no consequence of committing crime, so we are seeing more copper wire crime. Because there's no consequence for doing something wrong inside of the city of L.A., because we have a woke liberal policy for not, for promoting crime, promoting those wrongdoings, that's the reason why we are seeing a high, a high rise of copper wire. But at the same time, not only copper wire, but everything, small terrible crime will continue to increase.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
I'm Harriet Elliott.
Good morning.
I don't know why I'm giving three minutes, but--
Which items would you like to speak to?
Okay. I'm seeing that my council member in 10 is wanting to take money out of redevelopment and put it onto this track and field. Excellent idea. She has some very down-to-earth beliefs. Spindler said two weeks ago that all of you council members who are Democrats progressives are fawning over Michael Moore when he retired. And I didn't see my council member do that. I'm so glad. And I'm wondering if she didn't, doesn't have black women in her district whose kids have been killed, like my kid was killed, and that's why she can't find it in herself to fawn over Michael Moore. I'm, uh, police chief, uh, my son died in 92, and I actually believe that Braden at the time knew exactly what they were doing. They killed my son.
Uh, yes, my name is Susan Collins, and I'd like to speak on, on all available items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items, and again, that's items 56 through 69. Please begin.
Thank you. I'm here today to draw attention to the deplorable inhumane conditions animals endure at the hands of the agencies you oversee. But my comments here are really more for the people in attendance, because they are kind, compassionate, caring people who foolishly believe that the same people who have knowingly cultivated the identical, deplorable, inhumane living conditions resulting in thousands of deaths every year for the people of Los Angeles would somehow do better for animals. With a few exceptions, the members of this council and the mayor are liars, cheats, and frauds, and you all know it.
I'm sorry, Speaker, the animal services item is number 55 and is not currently open for public comment. So I need you to speak to an item that's open for public comment.
Okay, thank you. You are not in office by the will of the people, but by ballot harvesting and cheating the system. At this point, you're also guilty of depraved indifference to life. My message to everyone in attendance is if you want better for animals, the only way we'll get it is by forcing change in our election process--
So, again, Speaker, this is your final warning. I need you to tie this to an agenda item, or you're going to forfeit your time.
Right. So that our votes actually matter. And my message to the council members and the mayor is shame on you. Thank you.
If anybody would like to speak on the agenda items, now's the time to come up. Remember, public comment is being taken at the end of the meeting. If you have a public, if you have agenda items, item to come and speak.
So, please do not yell out during this meeting. Item number 55 is not open for public comment. It was heard at committee. So is there anyone else who would like to speak on the agenda items that are open for public comment? That's item 56 through 69.
Council should open 55.
Okay. Mr. Candido, please do not interrupt this meeting.
Can we move to the phones now for agenda items?
And for people calling in, again, the items that are open for public comment are 56 through 69.
Caller ending in 8130, please press star six to unmute.
What's up, nerds and virgins? Brocklanders, Los Angeles private investigator, all public items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
All right, 68, great pander here. Hopefully they give you a front row seat. The way you pander, you could teach their lame riders a thing or two. Maybe you can talk someone into giving Smoke and Scan a TV show. 58, where were you women talking about the women in Palestine in September? And for International Women's Day, Damon is looking for someone to do, help out with the shirt laundry, if anybody wants to volunteer. And on Women's Month, stop talking about how you need men to stand with you. You guys have jobs, buy tickets and support the WNBA games. The reason no one goes is not on the minute. You need to support your own people. And, uh, 69, Brocklander 69 says, make her come first and come hard the first time, she'll keep coming back tomorrow. You can, uh, put me on hold for general public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. Sorry about that. I'll speak to the public on 56, item 56, 67, 68, and protesting the Brown Act violations.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
I'm in, item 56, thank you. I'm in agreement with this grant from the Department of Aging as this corrupt city council should exercise more expenditures of the people's funds on the aging versus the criminal self-serving, looting activities of Kern Price and Marquise Dawson. 67, this public right of way waiver requirement is another self-serving act by criminal Marquise Dawson for this park because I believe he is receiving under-the-table funds and personal benefit from this project. I am opposed to this project and fleazy Marquise Dawson spending his time on a personal benefit park when 33% of all female assaults are against black women. I demand a no vote if indicted Kern Price and unelected puppet Heather Hutt are allowed to vote on this item. 68, by indicted criminal Kern Price is for city services in the amount of $110,000 for some stupid Emmy Awards, when three to eight of the 60,000 homeless people on the streets of Los Angeles will die today. This Emmy Award funding proposal to go to a billion-dollar industry by this criminal and crimely Marquise Dawson is the typical representation given to the black community. I demand a no vote and not one penny of the public's money to go towards the type of crap when the people in Price and Dawson's district areas are starving to death on the streets. This item should receive a no vote if indicted criminal Kern Price is allowed to vote. This item should receive a no vote if illegitimate unelected Heather Hutt is allowed to vote. I'd like to do public comment also, general public comment, later.
Yeah, hi. DanielGus.substack.com--
Good afternoon. Which items? Okay, so you have three minutes for the items, Mr. Gus.
Great, and then I'm gonna come back for general public comment, so don't cut me off. Um, item number 57, Women's Month. This is interesting. I will remind city council that one year ago, I reported exclusively, because the LA Times didn't, that you have a domestic violence situation at the top of the LA Fire Department where one of your command staffers, Kristin Katie Keppner, was on video threatening homicide against her domestic partner who was a female. So where were you then, council members, on International Women's Day? Where have you been for the past year on International Women's Day when you have domestic violence, women on women, at the top of the LA Fire Department? And by the way, talk about women standing up for women, council members? Kristin Crowley, the chief of the Fire Department, celebrated Women's Day with you, and she had a video of the homicidal--
So, Mr. Gus, please move on to another item.
Sure. Item 58, perfect thing, mental health awareness. How can you have a top brass of the Fire Department threatening murder-suicide, threatening murder-suicide against your domestic partner, and you're here to promote Women's, uh, Mental Health Day or Mental Health Week or Month? You have a suicidal, threatening, homicidal, threatening, uh, a person who's a heartbeat away from the, uh, being chief of, of the LA Fire Department. So how dare you talk about mental health when you have recorded evidence that, by the way, Michael Moore had in his possession, too? You have mental health dangers at the top of the Fire Department. How dare you talk about mental health when your chief of police and your chief of the Fire Department have one of your own threatening murder-suicide--
So, Mr. Gus, please move on to another item. You've exhausted your one minute.
Okay. Item number 65, Denim Day about sexual assault. In the same case, how dare you promote, you know, against sexual violence when the chief of your fire, the brass in your Fire Department, Kristin Katie Keppner, was on video not just threatening murder-suicide, but apparently the assault, which was recorded, which was recorded, included a sexual assault against your domestic partner who was a woman. So it's all hypocrisy. 57, 58, 65, and Ms. Keppner, if you want to sue me for defamation, I got a copy of the video. You're hypocrites by not protecting women, but claiming you're protecting women, claiming you want to help with mental health, and right at the top of the Fire Department, $400,000 a year--
Mr. Gus, your time has expired. Next caller.
Thank you. For, for mental health, my mental health in that of hundreds of others was impacted by, by city council arbitrarily saying that the chambers were at capacity and making us wait outside. Our government wants to tell us that COVID is over. If you catch it and you have a cup of chicken noodle soup, you can go back to work the next day. But this council wants to maintain a year-old, years-old limit on capacity. Uh, you make, instead of making, having us wait inside like we used to, uh, you make us wait outside. It, it's just absurd. And I hope all of these animal rights activists who turned out strong today realize how this council has rigged the rules to arbitrarily silence them. By sticking general public comment at the end, they ensure that this room stays at capacity, and 100 people will be unable to have their voices heard here. Just disgraceful. And on the note of mental health, uh, you know, my mental health would be a lot better if we hadn't had four council members arrested in the last four years. My mental health would be a lot better if this council had done a single thing to change a single law to address corruption since 2019. But they haven't, and they haven't done a single thing over this last year and a half since the Fed tapes to do a fucking thing. That really messes with my mental health. Um, 59, I don't think we should be voting on this. Paul Krikorian ain't here. He's been off on France, Japan, missing the last few meetings. Refused to hold himself accountable for his misuse of city resources for political activity. Needs repent or resign. And on the note of International Women's Day, it's important to recognize that for nearly half of the last decade, we only had one woman on this council. With Councilmember Rahm's win and KDL's likely demise, we will now have a majority of women on council. This didn't happen by accident. It happened because this council stepped up, unlike this council. A decade ago, we had a study that revealed women won council races at half, at the same rate men did, but only made up 20% of the candidates. With our move to high turnout elections and matching funds reform, we have actual change. Councilmember Rahm's election inspired candidates like Unisys, but it also served for inspiration for somebody like Tracy Park, who could believe that she could take on incumbent or even an establishment candidate like Greg Good. Paul Krikorian hasn't done shit to lift up women in his time. In fact, during redistricting, he was in the blender with Rahm, and he flipped and worked with Nury so he could save himself all for a dream Nazarian, just like we saw last week with his misuse of city position. And he used his city office to pump up Nazarian candidacy against one of those young women that was inspired to run. Absolutely shameful stuff. I don't want to hear shit from y'all talking about Women's Day until you do something to uplift women and give them a better opportunity to represent this--
Mr. Kwan, your time has expired.
Kevin, can you stay for a second? Kevin G. Lone?
So, please begin with your general public comment.
First, Ms. Hernandez, thank you for actually being respectful and sitting here and listening. Thank you. I really appreciate it, seriously. It's ironic that Skid Row is five minutes away from this beautiful building. As an animal rescuer of 10 years, the crisis in L.A., including Skid Row, has not improved. There's a misconception that people on Skid Row have a dog. In reality, most have two, three, five, eight. Last week, we held a privately funded vet clinic. We saw one couple with eight dogs. One died yesterday. One dog that just gave birth on the sidewalk, a family of four dogs that were abandoned, so on and so forth. Dogs are constantly kidnapped and go missing. We started a petition to ask the mayor and Stacy Daines and Kevin to help and enforce ban neuter. Right now, there are 21,000 signatures. Nothing is being done. Stacy even called Skid Row a lawless hellhole and said incidents on Skid Row are dealt with very, very light-handed enforcement. Animal abusers and breeders laugh in our faces when we say there are laws they have to follow to stop abusing animals. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Louise. I am here.
I am here, uh, my representative is, um, Nita Rahman, who's not here. She just walked out the minute we started talking. Thank you so much. Sorry, should take this off. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So, um, yeah, um, yeah, Nita Rahman, who just walked out after we just started talking about, uh, animals. And under the direction of GM Stacy Daines, the shelter is now turning stray cats and most owner-surrendered cats away, leading to an alarming increase in abandoned cats. An actual colony of domesticated cats has formed across the street from the South LA pound. Because of this, rescues are left to, rescuers are left to provide basic care for these disregarded animals, while South LA Shelter actually has one cat room that is completely empty and another room that's 70% empty. This new policy goes against what the shelter is intended for, and we demand that you step in and require the shelters to take in any domestic cat and all kittens. Thank you. I wish there was more of you here. It's really pathetic.
Directed energy, uh, used to be secretive. Now, in terms of warfare, you can get many books on it. However, in terms of human rights, uh, advocate, in terms of human, here is our advocate, his name is Robert Duncan. Do not read him. He is being impersonated right now. Someone killed him and is impersonating his words. The CIA is not playing tiddlywinks, okay? They actually killed this guy. And, uh, if you think that he's talking about, he's talking about no touch torture, no implants. If you read anything else, you're reading a phony. This guy's a NATO scientist. NATO scientists don't start saying no implants, no, um, no touch torture, and then change their mind. Not a NATO scientist. He's awesome, Ra- Robert Duncan. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Angela Yerenas. I am an animal control officer currently assigned to North Central. I'm also a shop steward with SEIU 721. I'm here today to show support for our newly appointed general manager and highlight some of the incredible work that she has accomplished in the eight months she's been here.
Please hold her time.
Under her administration, she has reduced our critically overpowered system by 50%.
Members of the public, please do not disrupt the public comment.
Develop a fair and transparent process.
Speaker, hold on just one second. Your time is paused. Everyone, please do not disrupt the general public comment of other speakers. Sorry, continue.
She's developed a fair and transparent process to promote a exit pathway for the animals in our system, has recognized and acknowledged the department is grossly underfunded, resulting in a request for more appropriate budget, creating a platform for all internal and external stakeholders to contribute to the future of our department. And she has returned public safety as a priority of, to our community. We need to adequately staff our animal shelters so they are more a fair working environment for the public, our volunteers, and the community we serve. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eve Benuelos. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us. I do want to acknowledge how difficult your job must be, having a bunch of random weirdos show up at every meeting to talk about weird things, and today I am one of those weirdos, but I'm not actually a crazy person. I am a native Californian, a very proud Californian. I was born and raised in San Francisco. Both of my parents were social workers for the city and county of San Francisco. I moved to LA when I was 17 to attend UCLA, Go Bruins, where I got a BA and master's degree. I taught for 10 years before founding a rescue called Pups Without Borders. I'm here today as part of what I believe to be a civic duty because all of us rescuers who are here have been unfortunately stuck with doing the job that LA Animal Services has not been doing. Even with a 2023 budget of $27 million, this is not appropriate for $27 million. We have been fundraising, having spay and neuter clinics, adoptions, microchips, vaccines, because the city is not doing it, and we are stressed and we are asking for support. Please do not sell breeder's permits when there are dogs being euthanized, or it will just create more of a problem. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Shira Scott Ashref. I'm the founder of the Animal Rescue Mission. I decided I really want to be respectful in my, in what I'm saying. I just, I find it so disrespectful that no one is sitting here. I, it's, I, I thank you, Unisis, but like Kevin DeLeon, who said he, you know, wants to help the shelters, how dare you not be sitting there right now when you know this is what we're speaking about right now? We said, please stay, and you walked out. The other thing, I'm just not gonna really read my speech, is that Kevin DeLeon said on air the other day, oh, LA is no kill. LA is not no kill. Do you know how much that hurts animals? That doesn't help anybody, except for how you look, and you need to stop caring about how you look. Overall, what I want to say here is that transparency is needed. Our shelters are disgusting, they're deplorable, they're embarrassing. We need transparency and we need solutions, because there haven't been any.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Pinyol. I am a Los Angeles tax-paying homeowner. My husband and I own a Marshall Studios Small Businesses here in Los Angeles. I'm a working actress, and I am the founder of the Canine Condition Nonprofit Foundation that raises funds to offer free spay and neuter for canine companions for families in need, because my city won't provide that. I'm a registered Democrat. I vote. I feel let down by this council and by all of these empty chairs. The conditions of our city animal shelters are deplorable. Have you been to a shelter lately? Have any of you gone to visit the city shelters as of late? LA Animal Services is clearly not able to handle this crisis properly. Today, I am saying, please help us help you. All of us here today are part of a very large and influential voting community in this city. Allow us a pathway toward the solution and fund more spay and neuter programs, which are the solution, to the growing overpopulation of innocent homeless dogs and cats being sent to their death every week. I am your constituent, and I demand that you take action and improve this crisis immediately.
My name is Liesel Jackson. I am the VP of Pups Without Borders. I thought I could get through this without crying, but I won't be able to. Every day, we get messages begging us to save dogs that are going to be killed, and we are forced to ignore them or decline them because we do not have the space and resources to save them. And I don't understand how the city of Los Angeles can look away from these animals in these deplorable conditions just waiting to die, knowing there are solutions that can help save so many innocent lives. Please stop offering breeder permits, make spay and neuters free and affordable, and give these poor animals a chance before they are killed due to lack of space. There are steps we can take together, and we can make a difference.
My name is Alex Armstrong. I'm a fired Long Beach Animal Care Service volunteer. I've watched many animals be euthanized in our city shelter, and I would like to speak to you about, uh, programs that in other countries are preventing, uh, this. We need to stop spay, we need to stop breeding. We need to have spay and neuter programs. The, the country of the Netherlands has done this. It's three times the size of LA County. It's twice the population. They have no stray dogs in that country. They have half-empty shelters because they have a government-enforced, provided spay and neuter program. Why can't we do that here in LA County and stop this madness? Why are we doing, why are we spending money on euthanasia and not spending money on stopping breeding? That's it. That's all you gotta do. Take the same money that you're spending on killing animals and spend it on stopping them being born. That way, your staff, your volunteers, won't have to go through this hell, and the rescues can do their job without all this. That's all I gotta say.
Richard Serrano, public comment?
You have a lot of volunteers here to help LA shelters. They're here, they want to help those animals. They got their own things going on here. You got officers working on the bounce-back program in animal control. That means they show up to work 11 times a month if they want to for more than their salary. Just like LAPD, you have 200 officers on that bounce-back. You guys are trying to do budget control? Look where your money's at. Pay attention. These people want to help these animals. Give them the chance to do so.
Hi, my name is Jessica, and I'm a veterinary technician of 16 years, and I've never seen our LA animal shelter this bad. You know, under the GM's new labeling system, a dog is now deemed to be dangerous or unsafe and is alerted to be killed because they do not do well in the playgroup and have not gotten into fights that setting. This, I suspect, is being done to kill more dogs using the excuse of behavior so the department doesn't have to admit to killing for space, which is the horrible reality of the current shelter state. Most of the dogs labeled as dangerous have no bite histories with humans or zero negative handling notes by staff volunteers and grooming during bathing time. They are being given the false label of dangerous so that Ms. Daines can perpetuate this idea that she is doing the community a public service by killing these dogs rather than just admitting that the shelter needs kennel space. Stop killing and stop breeding.
I agree with all of her points made. My name isn't important. I'm literally an animal, just like all of you. These animals in the shelters as well are just animals. If I got a runny nose and was labeled unfit for adoptability, then I would be euthanized as a human being, the same animal as a dog, an animal. So, I, I don't believe it is right to euthanize animals based on conditions that they're put in in the shelters. They're kept outside during the winter, and they get colds, then euthanized for runny noses so the loophole is that they can get their euthanasia bonuses. And instead, I think that they do need to employ more people. There's no onsite groomers, there's no basin to even wash these dogs that come in bloody or covered in fecal matter and smelling putrid and rotten, and then expecting the general public to adopt these dogs and then get these diseases that are contractable to these human beings such as guardia, scabies. These dogs are sitting in shelters, spreading these diseases to other dogs that then these adopters, these fosters, these people going in can get. So far this year, I've rescued 17 dogs, and tomorrow I'm getting eight. I'm one person.
Speaker, your time has expired.
All right, so for general comment, um, you should let everyone speak. Um, if you can go until 3 o'clock to try to suppress people from speaking, you can also go until 3 o'clock to hear everyone. Um, Kevin, you got 8,000 votes. Um, all the other candidates, including Isabel Arado, who's ahead of you, have 26,000 votes. You're gonna lose badly. Um, it's absolutely disgusting that your, your entire presentation on violence against women was just a pro-Israeli government, pro-genocide, you know, thing. Free Palestine, you all should call for a ceasefire. Um, and you do need to, um, work to help improve the conditions in the shelters, you know. I did adopt a dog a couple of years ago, um, adopted a dog, and, you know, she was in a kennel with like five other dogs, you know, it's, they're not being taken care of. It's, you know, it's really out of control. And Paul needs to resign, too.
Hi. Can you hear me? My name's Samantha Goodman. I'm from CD13, and I would like to start my comments by stating that some of the council people here show great disrespect to their constituents by not even being here to listen to what we have to say. If you hadn't noticed, people who care about animals cover many different demographics within your constituencies. That should be important to you, important enough that you give us the courtesy of your attention, because we impact votes. That being said, Mayor Bass, GM Stacy Daines, and LA Animal Services are unwilling to admit that we are in this crisis because of their inability to control the pet population with innovation, mass spay and neuter events, or spay and neuter enforcement. Instead, their answer to the problem is to kill their way out of it, labeling dogs as aggressive or dangerous as a way to send them to their death. Thank you.
That will be the last speaker for public comment here in council chambers. Let's move to the phone, please.
All right, so talking about Israeli diversity. Uh, two people of different religions cannot marry in Israel. Uh, they sterilize Ethiopian Jews by giving them contraception without consent. Um, talk about Israeli honesty. Uh, they lied about 40 beheaded babies. Turns out that was a lie. The New York Times article about Hamas mass rape, turns out the writer for that was a former Israeli intelligence officer, and it was all full of lies. Um, they claimed a calendar with a hit list. Turns out that was a lie, and the tunnel under that hospital was actually, they admitted they built it themselves. Um, most moral military, over 30,000 people have been killed in Gaza in just a few months. They keep killing people waiting for aid. According to the UN, they committed an atrocity when they massacred over almost 200 peaceful protesters during the Great March of Return. Um, they critically injured thousands of people. They bomb hospitals all the time. I think they bombed almost every single one with a NATO unit in it. They also, uh, blew up the oldest Christian church, I think, in the world in Gaza. Uh, they also killed unarmed hostages that were.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have one minute.
Okay, this one's for Councilmember Rahman. How can it be permissible? She compromised her principles. Her money is so powerful. The grifting is so palpable. Her friends are paid and endorse her personality force. She bends and conforms to the Zionist course. She used to look good to me, but now I find her nothing but corruptible. She runs and hides, there's no telling where her office went. She tells lies, that is something that we know. She falls so easily when backed against a wall. She gives excuses that we've all heard before. She's breaking promises while policies break the law. She used to look good to me, now I find her nothing but corruptible. Shout out to Smokin' Scan and a big fuck you to the IDF, Israel, and Kevin DeLeon.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Annette Sikicich, a beloved wife, teacher, an artist, a promoter of the arts.
Mr. McCosker, I apologize. Ms. Spindler?
I'm gonna start over, Mr. President, with your permission.
Of course. Okay, you've been warned. Sergeant Arms, can you please remove Ms. Spindler from the meeting?
Mr. Spindler, you have been warned multiple times just now. You have, are still disrupting this meeting, and the council president has asked you to be removed pursuant to Council Rule 7 and Rule 12. Mr. Spindler, you need to leave this meeting, and you need to do so quietly. We are in the middle of the adjourning motions. And for the record, Mr. Spindler is still refusing to leave the room.
All right, Mr. McCosker, I apologize for the interruption.
Thank you.
Camille Lewis, this is your first and only warning. Please do not disrupt the adjourning motions of this meeting. I'm sorry, Mr. McCosker.
Thank you, colleagues.